...this meeting to order, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. All right, public comment. Come on up.
Good morning, Ron Hartman. Topic's the Cootney Electric Building. I have learned that this building sits on a bedrock of granite. Therefore, the likelihood of radon in the building is high. Tests should be required to determine the level of radon and the cost it would take to lower it to government requirements if it's too high. The other thing that's puzzling me is with a real estate sale, there should have been a seller's disclaimer form done. And then that disclaimer form should have been things like if the roof leaks. And if the roof leaked, then Cootney Electric should pay for these repairs. If this stuff can't be resolved, or you can't figure out where you're at, I recommend that you get a real estate lawyer. Some of these inspections could cause very high repairs. And before starting any work, or signing any contract, I would want to know the total cost and if it was in my budget. I don't go out spending stuff not knowing if I've got the money there to pay for it. The costs should include all inspection report repairs. It should also include something that I learned in this Justice Building is soft cost. Never heard of those before now, but apparently that's the way you do business up here. And then, all the costs should be totaled up before you sign a contract with anybody. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Item one, Justice Center update from Turner Townsend-Herrie. Mr. Mendez.
Good morning, David Mendez with Turner and Townsend-Herrie for the record. Up on the board, we have projected, and I apologize for not giving you more advanced notice, we're not looking for action from the commissioners on today's update on the costs of the betterment items for the new facility. But we would like to go through those items, look at the cost, and answer any questions that you might have. I've got John here with the contractor about construction that can answer any of the detail questions that you might have. So, if you'd like, we can go through them item by item.
Do you want to do that again? Yep.
Okay. So, the first item we have, John, you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, I brought larger hard copies if anyone would like one.
I'll take one to go, but right now, I've got plenty. I mean, gee.
I'll take one. This is some pretty small type on here.
Thanks.
So, starting from the top, item A1, Sallyport Slab Thickness. This number's been presented previously and is unchanged.
So, if we want to go forward with something, we can just say today, yes, please bring us a change order for item one. Is that what we can do?
I didn't put this on the agenda as an action item, so that's totally up to you.
Right, but it's kind of direction, because we're not approving it today. We're saying, please bring us the change order.
So, I can process the change order, put that in front of you, and you can approve or deny it?
Yeah, and next Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah, so, do we want to make it? I would like a change order for item one, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
We know in the future, vehicles are going to get heavier, likely.
Your mic?
It's on.
Two on buttons. Yes, we know in the future that it's going to, vehicles will likely get heavier. So, we might as well just add the thickness there while we can.
Okay. And I think that's the right decision. It's heavier reinforcement, thicker concrete, it's exposed to the outside, there's more fluctuation, so it needs to be stronger. Stronger is better, I would say, in this case.
Okay.
Item number two, B1, is enhanced saddle flashings at parapet wall conditions. These are unique conditions where one wall comes into another, and we do have a waterproof treatment at those locations. This has been recommended by our envelope consultant as an enhanced waterproofing, kind of a secondary measure, just to tie that in with the weather barrier. So, that is the total cost on that one.
Okay. Yeah, that's quite a bit difference from the 50,000, so I would definitely be interested in a change order for B1.
Yep.
Bill, okay. Next.
All right. Item B2 is the window that we were discussing previously. Replacing, so currently, the design calls for, on the existing building, that clerk's office just north of the judge's office on the upper floor in the southwest corner. The current design calls for us to infill that current window with the solid wall. This is to put back a fire-rated window in that opening, which is required by code, in order to preserve daylight into that clerk's office. So, this is just the window. It does include the credit for not infilling the wall. And it does not include any kind of window shades, or tinting, or anything of that matter.
Okay. It's a fairly expensive window. Is that from the fire rating?
Yeah. The fire rating is a very premium product, and it requires a different type of window frame as well to accept that thickness of glass. And I do have that shown on the drawing, if there's any confusion about where that is located.
And that's the second floor?
Yeah, so, Jonathan, if you could go to the next page, and then zoom in on the bottom right corner, that item down there. So, that item B2, replace existing window. It's just that one window there.
That's a blue rectangle.
Okay, and so, the top is north? The top is north, and then the left is west?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. All right. What are your thoughts on that? I mean, if somebody's going to be working in that office for 10, 15 years?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wouldn't spend $30,000 on it.
Now, that's where I'm leaning. I mean, we can revisit it, but it just seems like a lot, and so.
Okay. All right, next.
Item C1, restroom sinks. So, if you were to go back to that drawing, thank you, and then go to the left and up a little bit. Zoom out maybe. So, there's a couple spots there. If you could zoom in on that one. That group of main public restrooms occurs on this floor, which is the main level, and then the level above. And this is to switch to integral solid surface sinks instead of drop-in porcelain sinks. It does include the credit for the porcelain sinks.
Okay. What are your thoughts on those?
I think it's a nice first, but I'm not in favor of it.
Likewise.
Okay, next.
Next up is looking at areas that had plastic laminate countertops in break rooms or conference rooms that have sinks in them, so item C2. Back on the drawing, these are highlighted in blue. You could switch back over to that. So, the blue items there, where they occur on multiple floors, a couple in the jury rooms, a couple backhouse break rooms, this would be a switch from plastic laminate countertops to solid surface countertops. And that's just a better integral, less susceptible to water damage. Should the laminate get cracked, which can happen, then water getting into there could deteriorate that counter quicker in those locations.
What do we have in this building? Do you know offhand?
Yeah, so, if we just took the restroom over here, for example, that's a plastic laminate countertop with a drop-in porcelain sink.
Works pretty well.
I don't really see a need to change that.
What?
Do you?
I don't see a need to change, to add this.
I don't see a need for upgrading the sinks. I mean, it's basically what we have here, which I've never noticed any deterioration from.
Right, so, the countertops is what we're on now, under the sinks?
No, I can see, C2, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's changing the countertop type at the locations that have sinks.
Wouldn't do that.
So, the first one was restrooms, the second one is break rooms. So, same condition.
All right, sounds like a no for those two. All right.
All right. Item C3 is a continuation of that, and it's just looking at all of the other plastic laminate countertops that were in the building, and switching those to solid surface as well, which would increase durability, but as discussed, this is the condition that you currently have in your other buildings, so.
Okay, so, no on that one as well?
Yes, no on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The next is item C4, which is the acoustical ceiling tile type. When you look at, when you're talking about acoustics for ceiling tiles, we use the term noise reduction coefficient, which is the amount of noise that it reflects versus absorbs. So, a lower, a 1.0 noise reduction coefficient means it would absorb 100% of sound that hits it. Currently, the ceiling tiles in the current bid have a noise reduction coefficient of .55. This is to go to a ceiling tile with an NRC of .8, which is a 45% reduction in the amount of noise that's reflected, if that makes sense. So, when you talk about an open office environment, or an environment with a big room like this, or courtroom, it cuts down on the kind of echoing effect, to some degree, if that makes sense.
I would be in favor of that.
What do we have in this room?
Yeah, that's, I'd have to check the specifications, but it's probably closer to the .55, or .6, or something like that, a lower acoustic value. The other benefit of this product that is being proposed and is priced here is enhanced durability during maintenance for removal and reinstallation. This particular tile tends to hold up a lot better and not be chipped, or show signs of wear and tear.
So, when you look at the features in this room, for example, if maintenance had to get up and replace something, a speaker, for example, they have to physically lift those up, set them aside, and that, when we talk about durability of those, that's mainly what we're talking about, because you don't do hardly anything to those. You clean them periodically, but.
And it costs us $70,000, $71,000 to do that?
Yeah.
For me.
Replace a lot of tile for that.
What do the tiles cost total right now?
I don't have that number, but I can give it for you.
I'm just trying to understand, is $71,000 a 4% increase, or is it a 45% increase?
I think, in general, this is a 60,000-square-foot building. You could probably say $2 a square foot is probably, you know, a rough estimate of what ceiling tile would be. That may be overstated, because I think that might include framing, but, so. So, if you have 120,000 for ceiling tile, and you're increasing it by 70, I think that's.
Yeah, those are rough approximate numbers. I could get more accurate information if it was required.
Yeah, I mean, it's a 45% noise reduction, but it's more than a 45% increase in price.
Yeah, well, there's other intangibles with it, as far as just the handling. Do we have extras? Is the building going to be supplied with a 5% or 3% overage?
You just get 10% of, we call it attic stock, so extra material that you'll store for future use.
Yeah, and there's storage for those somewhere. My take on a lot of this is that, you know, when a building doesn't have echoes, and it doesn't have people talking all at once, and then it just becomes a small roar, it makes it much more difficult to operate in there. So, this is probably a worthwhile expense. It's more than I would want to spend, but it's probably a worthwhile expense.
I think it's an intangible. You really don't know. We don't have anything that we can compare it to, other than some sort of statistical, you know, does it this by this, according to manufacturer? So, I'm not in favor of it. That's $71,000, that's a big chunk of change.
Well, I've been very fortunate to be in some of those offices with the very nice finishes, and it is a difference compared to the low-end Class B+ type, or A- type buildings. So, this is one that I would be okay with, but I'm okay with it.
I'm deaf anyway, so.
You've got your architect that's online. He designs and builds all sorts of buildings. I don't know if that helps with any perspective for you, but.
Ken, did you want to add anything on this item?
Sure, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Ken Gallegos, Lombard Conrad Architects. I would say that this is a pretty good value add for this type of building. The look of the tile is a more cleaner, more professional look than the budget tile that's currently in the budget. The acoustics, of course, of courtrooms and offices, you know, public defenders' offices, little conference rooms, kind of become key in any building, because one of the things that people complain about the most in buildings is being able to hear somebody in the next room over, or from the hallway. These ceiling tiles will help mitigate some of that sound transfer. It also helps mitigate some of the mechanical noise from, you know, ductwork, airflow, that sort of thing. It is, like we said before, you know, 60,000-square-foot building, so to upgrade the ceiling tile that maybe, you know, like a dollar fifty a square foot, I think is probably worth the cost on this one. Because what we don't want to do is get in the building and then have 20 people complain that they can hear everything that's going on, and there's mechanical noise above them. And at that point, you've already purchased the other acoustical panels.
I have a question for you, David.
Sure.
Since, you know, we retained you to be our representative, if you were one of us, what would you recommend on this particular item?
You know, it's, I've been in buildings, built buildings with both of those. For me, the durability of that product is, because I've been in buildings and done maintenance and upgraded, I think that's probably a good value. The acoustics that Ken talks about, where you have a carpeted room like this, you don't get as much echo, because you're getting the sound absorption in the carpet. But where you have a hallway, and you've got a hard surface floor, the echoing can be noticeable, and there's a, there's a pretty big difference between those two products acoustically.
And there's going to be some hard surface in the courtrooms themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I'm fine with it. I like the idea of the durability and the soundproofing.
You know, the other thing you might want to consider is maybe doing that in the two floors that are more public spaces, the courtroom, where you have courtrooms, and possibly the third floor where you've got the attorneys that are working with, in rooms, and maybe go to that level in some of the other spaces.
Well, the basement, though, it's all hard surface. I think they took out most all the carpet down there.
Sure.
And you're going to have the cells down there, too. So, I think any floor that we have cells on, it probably should be done. I'm fine with the whole building, because I can't imagine it's going to be too much of a discount to take out the basement, or, so. What?
Oh, I shared mine.
Okay. All right, so, there's two on that one.
Next item is C5, which is changing to a woodlook ceiling system in the five small public conference rooms on Level 2. And if we switched over to the drawings and went to the second to last page, Jonathan? There you go. Those highlighted rooms are the rooms in question, so. I believe these are rooms where attorneys meet with their clients. Is that correct, Ken?
Yeah, before they go into court, as well as, you know, any other victims, or meet with their attorneys, before going into court.
Thoughts on that one?
Just another comment about those rooms. So, keep in mind that those rooms are floor-to-floor walls that are insulated, so there's not transmission of sound from room to room. That would be just the sound within the rooms themselves.
Bill, thoughts on that one?
You're talking about the C5?
Yes.
Correct. This is an aesthetic change to the look of the tile, would be a wood-looking tile instead of a white ceiling tile.
I'm not in favor of that.
I'm not either.
Nope.
Okay, excellent. Next.
All right. The next one up is C6. This is in the three courtrooms, changing all of the plastic laminate paneling to wood veneer, and changing the rubber base to wood base.
This is all the vertical surfaces?
Yep.
What kind of wood is it?
Oak.
Oak. Someone actually wrote me an email, said they were opposed to fancy courtrooms, because we have a limited number, critically limited amount of walnut in Cootney County. And I think they were saying that tongue-in-cheek. You know, I have no problem with it being laminate paneling. I mean, this is not a, as the sheriff says, "We're not inviting people to stay here and get comfy." It's just to serve a purpose.
Right, so, that's a no on that one for you?
Yes.
Okay. Ken, can you answer the question about, is this what Ada County has in their courtroom?
Yes, Ada County does have wood veneer judges benches, and the bar, the little partial high wall that divides the gallery and the attorneys' tables, it is all wood veneer. I think the bench that you are currently sitting at might be plastic laminate. I'm pretty sure the old courthouse that you have in there is all solid wood. This is not to go to solid wood, it's more of a wood veneer. It's less cost than doing all solid wood benches like the historic courthouse is.
Thank you.
And the comments on there about the enhanced appearance and the easier to repair, wood chips and laminate, you know, it just depends on how often, you know, and how hard, maybe those benches are going to get bumped in the front to chip off pieces that would pair. I think the comment one time of, you could probably repair a lot of the plastic laminate, $179,000 over the life of the project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see it being, having the same kind of wear and tear. I mean, generally, people are not sitting and walking right in front of the judges, so I just don't see that. So, I would opt to not include that.
Okay. So, no. Next.
All right. Item C7 is adding the acoustical door bottoms to the 26 doors that are highlighted throughout the drawings. These include some detention areas, and some areas, such as the jury rooms and judges' offices, where privacy is of specific concern.
I would say yes on this one. Bill?
I can see why that might be necessary, so I would say yes also.
All right.
It's a trifecta, yes.
All right. Next is C8, which has been previously reviewed with the bailiffs, who did not require any kind of ballistic glazing at their offices, so that's been moved to the rejected column. Item C9 is, as requested when we met a couple weeks ago, adding automatic door operators to the public restrooms on Level 1 and 2, four total doors. And again, as Ken had said earlier, these are not ADA-required, but certainly do make access easier into those restrooms.
Thoughts on those?
Well, I think that, as far as ADA goes, it's probably prudent to make sure that we can add that kind of accessibility for folks. And it probably won't ever be cheaper if we change our minds later.
It makes a big difference if you're trying to get into the room when you got to pee.
Or when you're holding the baby.
That's right. That's it, yeah. I haven't done much of that. Yes, so I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Yes.
All right. The next is, was a voluntary one on our end, to continue that thought in looking at the current, so I think the drawings will be helpful on this one. Jonathan, if you could go to the second page. Okay, so, off on the far right side there, there's a yellow item, C10, add door operators. The current entry to the existing building becomes the main exit out of both buildings in the final configuration. We already have door operators on the new entry doors, which are those two pairs of doors at the very top. They're not highlighted, but that's where everybody's going to come in, go through security. Those are already accessible. This would be to add door operators to exit at the public exit, the primary exit right there.
Thoughts?
Yes.
Okay, done.
Okay. All right. Item C11 is one that I believe had been previously discussed, but we're adding it here just to consolidate. Item, it's to go to the luxury vinyl tile instead of ceramic tile in the lobbies, which was a bid alternate.
We have talked about that previously, and decided, I guess, from a maintenance standpoint, to go with the LDT rather than ceramic tile. So, that one, I've already presented to you last week. That was included in that budget update that I gave you, so that's kind of, it's a duplicate, just so you're.
And that's a good offset for the ceiling tiles.
The last one here is new to this discussion, but came up over the last couple weeks, and we just wanted to carry it here in the spirit of anything related to enhanced durability. It is to change the handrail. It is to change the handrail, the part that everybody's gonna touch in the north stairwell, which is the main public stairwell, from painted steel to stainless steel. So just less susceptible to scratching from rings or bags or whatever touches that handrail.
And that is a rough quarter of magnitude price, so it's not a finalized hard number that we're looking at. So if you want to defer that discussion until we do get hard numbers, that would be understandable.
Yeah, well, I like how you went from 30,000 to 4,000 on the second item, so if we can get a better number, that would be.
That one is fairly close. We're waiting on the installation component of it, which is a small portion of it. So I'm fairly confident that number's plus or minus a couple thousand dollars. Is kind of the range that we're dialed in on there. So as soon as I have that, I can update this and resend it. I was hoping to have it before we met today.
Can you go to the, to the drawing of that? Let's show the extent of it. So that's that in yellow? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, there's a bunch of yellow.
A lot of yellow. So the center top?
Correct.
So that would be, is that three floors of handrail?
It's all four floors.
All four floors, okay. So it's quite a bit of hand railing, I guess is what I was trying to get at.
I don't think ours are stainless steel here, because I think they get repainted all the time.
Do they?
So, all right, thoughts on that?
I've never been in the stairwell, so I don't know.
I would say just cut the final numbers. I understand, I mean, if it's a very high-traffic area, it will it'll look better longer, require a lot less maintenance. But without knowing it, for sure.
Okay, so we'll get that final number and update this log. And then, item D1 is that added camera that we had talked about before. I had presented a number, I mistakenly had this in the final cost column. Last time I presented this, it was 1,250, and that was wrong. And so this is the final number here, so sorry about that if there's confusion there.
I'm good with that one.
So just to back up on that decision process that we have talked about this before, we had a meeting with the bailiffs. There were several locations that we talked about adding cameras to. This was the only one that they requested, so.
Okay, all right. Look forward to some change orders.
All right, we will put that all together. I believe the current plan, David, is to have these go towards the design contingency that's within our GMP.
Yes.
So it'll be a contingency usage authorization, which is not actually a change order that increases our contract value.
Oh, perfect.
So that's already considered into the budget that I went over with you last week. I've broken out the design contingency and the construction contingency for you to look at as we go. So those dollars are in there, and you're gonna see negative numbers as we draw down from that. So we should probably end up with, so those are around 800,000 each.
Okay. Thank you. Any other updates?
No, no cost updates.
All right, questions?
Nope.
Comment?
Nope.
Great job.
We're still looking at a couple of change orders coming from the final comments that we get from the different agencies on the drawings, the final permit that we're getting for this. So that'll be coming up here pretty soon. Thank you.
All right, item 2, University of Idaho Extension Office Updates and FY '25 Budget Request Discussion. Mr., is it Gauz?
You can front table second.
Uh, front table's fine.
So, yes, for the record, I'm Rusty Gauz, and I'm the Northern District Director for University of Idaho Extension. I'm here with.
Hi, I'm Shelley Johnson. I'm the county chair there at U of I Extension.
So both of us kind of in these unique roles to meet with you today in just a little over our first year, where I started this last December. And I think it was about a year ago, this timeframe, that I met with you the first time. And I remember that because I think we were celebrating that week, the 106th anniversary of University of Idaho Extension in Cootin County. And so next Friday is 107th anniversary of this cooperative partnership. So it's kind of a neat time to be here. It has been my pleasure to, with Commissioner Matarri being our kind of appointed liaison, to work with our office and the faculty and the staff that do the programming in Cootin County, to get to know him, I think, better. And I've enjoyed his critical thinking and practical process, and I mirror that kind of thinking process, so I've enjoyed that. And it was really his idea. I said, you know, I'm getting to know you, but the rest of the commissioners are not. And so why don't you come and just give some quarterly updates? And so I really appreciate that invitation. I don't know that we needed the invitation, but I think I needed it, just for that welcoming. And so, and I'll admit, I think Shelley and I have talked just strategy of, you know, we've been here for almost 107 years, working in this relationship. And I think our predecessors, and I say new, she's new in the county chair role, so really taking time out of her long-tenured faculty career, being not just state-recognized, but nationally-recognized in what she does, to take some of that time and be the administrator for the office and help with the budget. So really, some of the details in the budget Shelley can answer better than I can, as I kind of work from Boundary Counterdown to Idaho County and all the differences between those counties. But I think I recognize that while we won't propose an increase in our budget this year, even though we would love to, you don't know us that well. And I don't think our predecessors who put their head down and just worked, didn't do some of that work for you to know what Extension is doing and the values it's bringing back to Cootin County. And so I don't know that we have the right to really ask for a lot until you get to know us better. And so our commitment is really over the next year or two, give you quarterly updates so that you, as commissioners, can make those decisions and feel really good about who you're making them about. I think we have a great story to tell, and I look forward to being able to tell that over the next year. Leanne mentioned to us that it's really time to talk about the budget, so that'll hijack some of the, that initial kind of conversation. I think next time we meet, I would like to bring in kind of our people, really who Cootin County Extension Office is, and have some, a chart to kind of help display that and articulate it, but just bring the faces here and let you guys meet them. So with that, I know we have a budget, and I think there's two things to talk about the budget. There is just the budget as it is, and we can go line by line if you need to. And also, there's a lease agreement, just the 32nd history on the lease agreement. By mandate, largely the faculty are provided by University of Idaho, and then the location is largely provided by the county. And so I think for the majority of those 107 years, it's existed in county-owned buildings. In 2000, with COVID and needing to space out, shared spaces, I think it was the election board is where our offices were. And so that wasn't gonna work since we were with the election board just for security reasons and spacing. And so there was a move to move the Extension Office to the University of Idaho Research Park. And that's a little confusing. It took me a year to understand why we're leasing from University of Idaho. And, but it is a pretty explanatory, I think the naming gets a little confusing, but it's really a, we're tenants. And it wasn't necessarily an academic institution building, although it was donated to U of I. It's really a revenue generating. And so we were a tenant, just like everyone else there. Unfortunately, while I think in our two-year lease agreement structure that was set up, that's about 36,000 a year to provide that space, we'll be out of that building likely in September, at the end of that agreement time. So we're hunting. And so some of my conversations with Commissioner Matarri are with, and his knowledge of the community, helping us find some locations within our budget. So that's, we're struggling through that right now. We aim to find a location that will work and will suit us and that will thrive in. But that's kind of where we're at.
Is that about 4,000 square feet? Remind me what your.
Currently, we probably have more space than we actually need, but so it's more than that. We think we could fit in 2,500 or 3,000. That'd be tight compared to what we're used to, but.
Yeah, we're looking at making sure that we've got offices, some individuals, some we could probably put in a larger meeting room type thing with cubicles. We have quite a bit of storage between our 4H program, our Forestry Program. I do a lot of nutrition education in which I have contractors and my staff going in and out of our schools and things like that, grabbing equipment and things. And then our master gardeners as well. We all just have a lot of stuff, really cool stuff, but we need to maintain that, keep that in some storage capacity. When we used to be in with the Elections Department, it was nice with, because that was the old BLM space. They had the garage bays there, and that worked sufficiently for a lot of our long-time storage. So I think it's kind of that combination of the two. And then we do teach a lot of classes and things as well, and having a dedicated classroom would be lovely. Some of our classes, though, are up to, you know, 70, 90 people, 100, something like that. And so we want to be conscious of not building that into that 36,000 dollars a year. If we can find a space that has a large classroom that we can use from time to time, that'd be great to dedicate most of the lease part of the funding towards just kind of what we need in that day-to-day piece, and then hopefully look for other type of classrooms elsewhere.
And if you've been to the Research Park in the last couple of years, I know Bill has, and then Bruce has, you might have, I'm not sure, but we're really, have been holding two locations. We had our Extension Office that you all have been great to provide that space for. And then through ARPA dollars, our 4H educator, Teresa Baldorama, in Madison-Soton, the program coordinator with her, took advantage of the ARPA dollars that were out there and created the Cootin County 4H STEM Center. And it has been an incredible facility, serving, you know, a minimum 300 kids a week, in and out of there doing STEM education. So those ARPA dollars, as you know, have concluded. And so we have found some other avenues to try to limp along, but we're, as of March, we're out of that space as a STEM center. And so we're wrestling through, how do we, what's that next step look like? And that's in addition to the traditional 4H programming that has been here for a long time and will continue. But the STEM center education, we're having to reshape and re-identify what that looks like for us. So Teresa's done a good job of finding alternate partners to help host site for now. Whether that's sustainable or not, we'll see, but that's part of the equation, is we look for a space. Unlikely that for that dollar amount in this area, we're gonna find a castle to support everything. So I think it's reasonable that we identify partners that have space, which is the norm in most counties anyway, that people are just hosting and not having to necessarily set up a school, so. Just to shed light on what it might look like if you can.
Yeah, do we want to look at the budget?
Or.
Again, not asking for an increase this year. We had a little bit of change in U of I's fringe rates and things that we just put back into salary. Because I'm sure we'll be seeing some, you know, cost of living increase and things like that, so.
I think you have two sheets. There's the budget sheet that I think John has that details, there you go. That details the budget that I think the county provided, it's 156 or so that's from the county for operations and salary line. And then there's the 36 that's in the lease agreement, which is in the MOU that we have. So that total equals the 192. The other sheet that we just made for you is actually in a response to Commissioner Matarri last year, asking just with grant dollars. Really, your contribution and that collaborative effort is really seed money to providing a portion of salary. And then University of Idaho is that other portion of salary, where then those people are pursuing grant dollars and opportunities. So that's, this graph that you see is just kind of a display of what that looked like in '23 and '24. And we celebrate that, because it's a great return on investment that, for those 192, if you just took that as seed dollars, there's roughly seven-plus dollars coming back to Cootin County in direct education efforts or programs. And those, we don't buy buildings with those. We can't, we don't, there are staff dollars. Some of the additional staff that we have in the office are supported through those ways, but. So that's just, that was in response to trying to help look like what our, the enterprise looks like with the different pieces kind of factoring in.
Question on the fees that are charged. Do you guys look at those regularly? Because I think you just had a fee increase recently, the last two years.
Usually, our fees are generated per class, and so what's interesting about Extension is we provide that research base to the area in which we live. So we're not necessarily teaching credit courses. That's an entirely different entity. So when, say, Chris does his short course series or something like that, he'll charge for that series that he offers. And usually, he embeds anything from all the materials, the person were to receive, and then collect those fees that would pay for some of those costs and things. So when we're looking at typically who charges for our program, Teresa does for the 4H program at $40 per enrollment. Cara does as well for her Master Gardener piece, which is around $6,000 per year. And then Chris tends to bring in around $17,000 or so, just in those program fees. The work that I do is typically funded through my grant dollars, and its primary focus is on low-income families. And so I use those grant dollars, obviously, to help support our families in need and meet families where they are located, so we can provide that nutrition education. Our whole role is to look at obesity prevention as a large project. And so I don't charge for my programming because of those grant dollars that I receive every year, so. So to answer to your question, it kind of depends on what, in particular, we would charge for a particular class, especially if, you know, if printing costs went up through the county or something like that, we would embed that into that class offer. So, yeah, it looks like it's about 60,000 a year that we're taking in with that, so.
All right, did you want more information on the budget?
No, no. I appreciate you keeping the ask the same. And, you know, hopefully you can find a unit with the right combination of office and warehouse to fit your needs. I think that will be a little less expensive than, you know, complete Class A space.
Yeah, we're very interested in the kind of office-industrial space, because that could really meet some of our 4H needs and Master Gardener needs especially. The one thing we're not finding, we're finding an industrial space with maybe an office or two. And we're, right now, usually about a six to seven staff. So we're just, we haven't found that right spot yet, but we have identified a couple of agents that are helping us look and kind of sleaze through, particularly in Corlaine and Hayden areas, so.
There's that big development off of Atlas, just north of Hayden. There's a bunch of kind of industrial-type buildings going in there. That might be something to look at.
Yeah, yeah. No, we've appreciated the partnership with U of I Research Park. The facility's been great. But it is a bit of a drive for many of our, you know, constituents, and it would be nice to be back in Corlaine or Hayden or somewhere along those lines. So we'll see. We've got a few months here to plan, so we're working on it.
All right, and are they, they're just not gonna renew the lease, or it's?
It's more of a competitive atmosphere, and there's a USDA grant that is coming in that can pay almost 20-fold what our budget is. And so it makes sense that they're giving us forewarns, say, we're gonna probably take this opportunity.
And they're looking at signing a 15-year plan with them, so.
Right, I don't blame them.
Yeah.
I guess in conclusion, I would just say, as I get really to interact with commissioners from the 10 counties I'm in, I've come to deeply appreciate all that you have to do. And every county is very different. You guys definitely have a lot on your plate, so I appreciate just the kind of relaxed relational atmosphere that we'll press into and get to know you better, so.
Yeah, and it'll be nice to be back and present to you guys, too, because I would hope you would see us as, I mean, we've got a lot of positive things happening in our program, so we make a lot of impact in the communities with the grant dollars and the funding that we do receive. So it's been, I've been here since 1999 in my role, and I couldn't ask for a better position to serve the community, so.
Yep, great. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, item 3, Casey North Inspections. And Lieutenant Glikofus, please.
Good morning, commissioners. So we're here today to brief the results of two of the major inspections that were conducted. And I'm gonna turn this over to Maintenance Supervisor Tom Reed.
Thanks.
Thanks.
When you start with the electrical, I don't know, did you get a copy of the report?
I think, I think Lieutenant gave us all copies.
I emailed them, too. Okay. There's some stuff the electrician noted, and it was nice enough to put it in kind of a recommended section. And this is just preliminary, so if we want to go, have him go deeper, he provided a quote for that, too, so.
Okay. And I think any time that you repurpose a building, you're going to find these things. You know, we're making changes, and we're going in there and doing stuff, so.
And not to dime out Cooten Electric, but they did some questionable things while they were there. A lot of it has to do with labeling.
Has to do with what? I'm sorry.
Sorry, my voice. Labeling the panels. A lot of the panels were labeled specific to the individual that was in the office instead of the office. So now that they're gone, it's going to be kind of a interesting.
Have you asked their maintenance to come back and help you identify those things?
I don't, I haven't talked to Mike.
We haven't, we could. We've asked, you know, they're very communicative to us. Like, you know, like Tom noted, mapping was a big deal in that report, the panels being mapped. So we could reach out to them and see if they're willing to come out and help out with that, but.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful. And I know that the asbestos is happening today, the testing's happening today?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, because I had talked to Doug Elliott, and he had let me know that they had remodeled in '79, '95, 2000, 2005, 2013, 2015, 2016, 2018. And the general construction had never brought forward to them that there's an asbestos problem, so likely we won't find anything.
And talking to the contractor, he said there might be asbestos, but a lot of the newer stuff is, what's the word I'm looking for, not a concern. It's the older stuff that has the chemicals. So apparently all, even gypsum, has some asbestos in it, which is sheetrock, and those kind of materials. So he's pretty confident the building should be okay, but we'll find out by Friday.
All right, do you know if the old courthouse here has asbestos in it?
I'm not sure.
Okay, because that was obviously built.
Yeah, and that was remodeled several hundred times.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, and then also, what I had put in the board packet, which I can get to both of you, were the Panhandle Health District inspections. So they're being inspected every two years as part of the Critical Materials Program. So they have not had any issues, and their last one was 2022. And so it'll be due this year, 2024, probably in the summertime, I imagine. And, yeah, and then also, what I've not had a chance to look at, Cooten Electric did supply us with a, an inspection right before, right when they sold the building to us. So that one was in documents that I found.
And what inspection was that?
Um, I'd have to.
Was it a structural inspection?
I think it was the hazmat stuff, the outside tank and.
Is that the fuel tanks? Water oil separator?
That was just a fuel tank inspection.
Yeah.
You know, the big thing with this building is just the fact that, you know, a year ago, and you can go back in the videos and look, you know, the initial guesstimate by Lieutenant Klinkifus was around $450,000 for us to work on this building.
That was for us to move into it.
To move into it, yeah, to move into it, right? And now we're looking at a new roof, repairing wiring, you know, just trusting but verifying that there's a clean slate when people move in so that we know that there are no hazardous materials. But what doesn't seem to be happening is that this was all anticipated beforehand. So we bought this building, and now we're stuck with it, and now we have to figure out how much we're going to end up spending until we can actually use it. And that is the difference between, from what it looks like, a little bit of foresight, a little bit of understanding what we're getting ourselves into, versus just doing it and then dealing with it afterwards. Same thing with the electric bill, which I believe was around $11,000 in January. You know, we don't even have this stuff in our budget.
Right, and we didn't know at the time we bought the building that the sheriff was going to use it. So all these things come together, and we just deal with them as they come up. So we're getting all the inspections, and, you know, I mean, even Bill said that, you know, he would have done things differently, but here we are.
But you knew it was going to be used.
Yes.
So it doesn't matter who's using it. What matters is that it's going to be used, and so, you know.
And while they're in there, it's difficult to go and have all these inspections while they're in there. So when they left in October, we started this conversation about what needs to be done to go forward. All the inspections are happening.
Yes, they're happening now. My point is that it's just, you know, it's after the fact, and we're discovering, you know, what it is that's new. It's, my only point with it is that we just didn't have the budget for this stuff. We didn't, we never discussed a total dollar amount. It was, let's buy the building and figure out what we're going to do afterwards. And, you know, that's why I've been advocating, before we, you know, engage in all these projects with the building, let's know exactly what's going on with it, so we're not bidding for jobs that we think we're doing, but once they get involved in it, we're going to discover something different.
Yeah, and we're doing that.
And that saves mine. So I appreciate the board's support on that. But I think it's also important to note that, you know, we just didn't have a budget for any of this stuff. We could have known how much the overhead was for the building, how much it cost to heat it and things like that. And that just didn't seem to have occurred. So now we have to figure out where this money is going to come from moving forward.
Right, well, again, it's, you cannot replace this building for what we bought it for. I mean, there's no way you could go build out and get the land, so it's still a great deal. I mean, it's just like the BMW I bought. I got a great deal on it, so then I knew that there was going to be fixes that need to be made. So I went and I put some money into it, and here we go. I couldn't anticipate, you know, the, some of the stuff that was going to find, you know, later. So it's, it happens, and we're getting through it, and we're going through it. And, you know, once again, the detective build-outs, if you're worried about money, we can always put off the detective build-out, because that doesn't need to happen right away.
And what we're, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
And what we're finding is the cost is pretty minimum so far. So the building was kept up while they were staying there, but not to our standards, I guess. And you're always going to find things here and there, and I understand the past history there, but I think we just need to move forward and get these inspections done.
Yep, and I just realized that I am late, so I got to go to Post Falls.
And I know you have to leave, but last week you were going to give us an update, and we never got that.
Right, because I had to leave again.
Exactly.
Because the last one was like an hour and about 45 minutes. Do you want to schedule this meeting for two hours?
I wouldn't mind scheduling it in a way that we could either continue this later today after the business meeting and put it on break, or.
Yeah, let's do that.
Or put the items up front and have Herry later on.
We are going to need some direction. There were some things in both inspections, both mechanical, HVAC, and electrical that recommendations, so we will need some direction at some point on how you want us to proceed with those recommendations.
Okay.
Sure, sure, we can do that. So why don't we just go to break right now and then start back up at, what, 3:15, 3:30?
Uh, no, I have a 3:30 meeting in Hayden, so.
No, that won't work if.
Five o'clock, six o'clock?
I'm done. As soon as I leave for my Harbs meeting at 3:30, I won't be coming back to the building. But if we want to do it at 2:30, we can do that. I don't think that the business meeting's going to take a long time.
I'm fine with that. We can just do it right after the business meeting, if that's okay with you, Bill.
Yep, as long as we move along.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
We'll be right.
Thank you.
So we're, what are we doing?
For items three, which we were on earlier, items four, five, and six, we're going to move that to the next Tuesday meeting's VOCC Commissioner Status Update. And that leaves us with public comment. Would anyone like to say anything? Anyone on the line? No? Okay, it's 3:23, meeting adjourned. Thank you.